Well, good evening. Call to order tonight's Bothell Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, February 12th, 2014. Welcome back all of the commissioners who are in attendance tonight. I hope you've enjoyed your holidays, and we have a number of staff here to help us through this evening. Seeing there's no public, there are no non-admitted public comments, we have approval of the minutes from November 20th. I will listen for a motion for approval of the minutes from November 20th of 2013.
I'll move to approve the minutes as written from the regular meeting of November 20th, 2013. I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passed unanimously. Thank you. Moving further down the agenda, we have no new business. There is no public hearing tonight, so at this time I'd like to open a study session on the 2014 Docket of Plan and Code Amendments, including the 2015 Periodic Plan and Code Update. And at this time, it looks like Gary Hassler is ready to lead us.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Gary. Welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioner. I have a brief presentation for you, so I'll move to the podium. I said brief, you wish, right? It shouldn't take more than about 10 minutes, but it is important stuff, so we will go So as the Chair has already said, this is the 2014 Docket of Plan and Code Amendments, including the 2015 Periodic Plan and Code Update. Before I get started, I think you know all of us on staff with the exception probably of Sherman, who is sitting on your left side. Sherman is the city's transportation planner, works in Public Works. He will be assisting us on the periodic plan and code update, primarily with responsibility for the transportation element, so you'll be seeing Sherman later this year. So I wanted to introduce him to you before we got going. You know Bill, and you know Bruce. Dave is not with us tonight, but you also know Dave. Those are the staff who will primarily be involved in the plan update, though you may see other folks from time to time as well. So with that, first of all, the periodic plan and code update is the highlight of the 2014 docket, but my presentation is really about the docket in its entirety, so I'll start with that. And the docket, as you know, is an annual council review. Whoops, excuse me. There we go. Thank you. The docket is an annual council review of suggested plan and code amendments and related proposed actions. Each year, we take a proposed docket to council, and council decides which items warrant formal initiation and also the process path for each of those initiated items. And that process path is usually either to refer to yourselves to the Planning Commission for consideration and recommendation back to council, or for direct council consideration. They have the ability to retain items for their own hearings. And then again, we ask them to consider the priority of each item. And from that, from items that are initiated plus the prioritization, we construct the annual work program for you. The themes in this year's docket were, first and foremost, the Growth Management Act mandated 2015 Periodic Plan and Code Update. We're calling it the Periodic Plan Update because that's sort of the official GMA title for it. We're required to do a periodic plan update every eight years. Another theme in this year's docket was amendments requested by property owners or other private parties. We had one request from property owners in the Fitzgerald 35th Avenue Southeast subarea, and one request from the North Shore School District. And then there are always staff-requested plan and/or code amendments on the docket. So I'll cover each of these in turn. Again, for each item, we request that council determine whether to initiate, not initiate, or study further that item, and per code, the council must initiate items by motion. And then again, for initiated items, to determine whether to refer to the Planning Commission or retain for direct council consideration, and whether to give a specific priority to items. And you'll notice that one of the items I gave you was a docket matrix showing all the items we took to council with the information for each. And then there are three columns over at the far right of that matrix, and you can see that there's a priority for each item in that matrix. So the first item that we asked council to initiate was the 2015 Periodic Plan and Code Update. The Washington State Growth Management Act requires the periodic updating of the local comprehensive plans and development regulations, and in 2011, the state legislature established deadlines for the next periodic update. And in accordance with that schedule, our deadline for updating the Imagine Bothell Comprehensive Plan and Implementing Regulations is June 30th, 2015. The primary purpose of the update is to ensure that local plans and regulations comply with all current requirements of the GMA. It's anticipated that the plan and code update will comprise the bulk of your work for the remainder of 2014 and the early part of next year, and also the bulk of the council's land use items for the first half of 2015, with adoption by June 30th of next year. The major issues for the plan and code update are as follows. First of all, we are required to accommodate our allocated population and employment growth. We believe that we have adequate capacity in the King County portion of the city to accommodate our growth targets, but we have a shortfall in the Snohomish County portion of the city. And I believe Bill and I may have talked to you about this last year, so this may be a refresher. We have a residential capacity deficit of just under 3,600 persons in the Snohomish County portion of the city. Last February, we gave council a preview of the plan update and this specific issue, and showed them the capacity deficit in the Snohomish County portion of the city. And we gave them a heads-up that as part of the plan update, we would like to explore three different scenarios to accommodate that deficit. Those three different scenarios are in the Canyon Park subarea, the Country Village 527 subarea, and the Shelton View Meridian 3rd Avenue Southeast subareas. So we're bringing three potential land use subareas to you to look at. In other words, redesignating land with a different plan and zoning designation, so that we can accommodate that population deficit as we're required to under GMA. A second major issue for the plan and code update is incorporating the transfer of development rights into the land use element and potentially the Canyon Park and/or other subarea plans. At present, the Canyon Park subarea is essentially a commercial subarea, or the Canyon Park Business Center has primarily commercial designations on it. One way that we can accommodate the population deficit in the Snohomish County portion of the city and meet some goals for the urban center designation for Canyon Park is by putting a residential component onto that subarea. At the same time, we can incentivize that residential development through the transfer of development rights, and we'll talk about that in a lot more detail as we bring that to you. But it's almost a serendipitous situation where we can sort of kill two birds with one stone, so to speak. Another major issue in the plan and code update is the update of the housing element, in particular, the background data and the housing and needs assessment part of the element. We're working with Arch at the present time to update both the background data and the housing needs assessment. And in addition, council initiated a code amendment as part of the 2013 docket to reexamine our accessory dwelling unit regulations. And we will fold that into the housing element and housing regulation update, and look at them at the same time. And Arch will assist us with the accessory dwelling unit regulations at the same time as the element. We need to coordinate the plan update with the 2015 through 2021 Capital Facilities Plan. We need to update the transportation element to be consistent with any changes to the land use element and capital facilities elements. So if we make land use designation changes to accommodate, for example, the population deficit, then we need to make sure that the transportation and capital facilities elements are in sync with that. It's one of the goals of the Growth Management Act, that our plan be internally consistent, which means that things like transportation, capital facilities, and land use have to agree with each other. We can't plan for more people without planning to move them around and accommodate them. And then we need to update all of the other planning area-wide elements and subarea plans to reflect change conditions since the last major plan update was done in 2004. So beginning next week, we will start bringing you, first of all, the planning area-wide elements. And next week, you will see the vision statement and the annexation element, both of which Bill will be bringing to you. And then, as you can see in your work program calendar that we provided in your packet tonight, we've run that out through the end of July, so you have an idea of what's coming to you. That may change a little bit with time, depending on how well things go, or how well they don't go, and depending on staff resources. But we've tried to plan that out as well as we can, at least through the August break, so that you can see what's coming week to week. And we'll be bringing each of the planning area-wide elements to you in turn. The projected schedule, as already mentioned, from February through August, you will be working primarily on updating the planning area-wide elements. The landmark preservation board will take a look at the historic preservation element, and then they will send that to you, as the code requires, to consider as part of the whole plan update. From September of this year until February of next year, we'll start bringing the subarea plans to you, so we'll go through those one by one. And then from March until May of next year, council will review your recommendations on everything, and by June 30th, we will adopt the plan update. So council formally initiated the 2015 Periodic Plan and Code Update as part of the 2014 docket, and they assigned the project to the Planning Commission and other boards as warranted for deliberation and recommendation back to council. Even though the periodic plan and code update is required by state law, initiation by the council formally advises the public that the update has begun and announces the scope of work for the project. As part of your packet tonight, I included a scope of work and schedule for the plan update in your packet, and that's fairly detailed. And we'd be glad to take any questions you might have on that later. So that's the periodic plan and code update. And continuing with the rest of the docket, the next item council considered was a property owner request within the Fitzgerald 35th Avenue Southeast subarea. A number of property owners in the vicinity of 39th Avenue and 236th Street contacted the city earlier this year, or actually late last year, to express concern that the current R5400A Low-Impact Development NICFU CHOPA zoning regulations applicable in their area were discouraging development of their properties. And again, LID stands for Low-Impact Development, and everyone knows that NICFU CHOPA stands for the North Creek Fish and Wildlife Critical Habitat Protection Area. It's everybody's favorite acronym, and how can you forget it? So staff sat down and talked with those property owners, and we also interviewed three developers who have been talking with property owners in the area about potential development of their property. And after talking to both parties, we concluded that some plan and code amendments may be warranted to reduce the uncertainty that those developers and property owners have identified as reasons why they haven't pursued development within their area. And so we asked council to initiate plan and code amendments to address that issue. And we anticipate that those amendments would provide more clarity to the regulations, reduce the complexity of the regulations pertaining to forested cover, amend the provisions pertaining to wildlife corridors, better identify expectations regarding the 39th Avenue Southeast improvements, or what's known as the Bothell Connector, and identify and amend or eliminate duplicative regulations. Council did initiate consideration of amendments to land use policies and implementing zoning for this topic, for this issue, and they retained it for direct council consideration as a high-priority item to be heard as soon as possible this year. Part of the reason for them retaining it directly was they knew you would be busy on the periodic plan and code update, and they didn't want to throw an additional project on you. So they felt they could tackle this while you were working on the periodic plan and code update. And as part of the initiation, they also asked staff to reconsider or reexamine the status of the 39th Avenue Connector, which is a fairly complex issue and one that will take some staff work to do. The next item we asked council to consider initiation was regarding the number of unrelated persons that may live in a single-family dwelling. BMC 1206 permits up to eight unrelated persons to live together in a single residence. We had received several emails in late 2013 relating to this regulation, and the people were essentially citing concerns with a single-family dwelling in their neighborhood. Their concerns centered around issues with parking, traffic generation, and just the fact that, in their opinion, so many people living in a single-family dwelling was having an impact on the character of the single-family neighborhood. Council initiated and directed the Planning Commission to study the issue, determine whether any amendments are warranted to the current regulations, and report back to council in conjunction with a periodic plan and code update. It's likely that if any plan and/or code amendments are warranted, that they would occur either in the housing element or land use element or both, and implementing regulations. So council's direction on this one was a little bit different. They didn't necessarily initiate plan and/or code amendments directly, but we asked them to have you look at the issue. So we'll provide an analysis of the issue for you, try to take public testimony on it, hear what people's concerns are, and then have you make a recommendation back to council as to whether you feel amendments are warranted or not. The next item on the docket was a property owner request from the North Shore School District. The school district asked council to consider initiating code amendments to exempt portable classroom buildings from paying traffic mitigation fees, as are currently required by BMC 17045. The school districts stated that a number of other jurisdictions, including King and Snohomish Counties, Belleville, and Mill Creek, don't collect such fees, since they recognize the temporary nature of portable classroom buildings. Unfortunately, there was no one from the school district able to make it to the council meeting, so while staff had recommended initiating the code amendment, there simply wasn't support on the part of the council to do so. And with nobody from the school district able to argue their case, it didn't move forward. And I'm doubtful whether, even with somebody from the school district there, whether council would have initiated code amendments anyway. Several council members shared anecdotes about, in their experience, portables being anything but temporary, which I think we're all familiar with. So council, again, council did not initiate consideration of the proposed code amendments, and in accordance with the code, they simply won't be considered further. The next item was a staff-proposed amendment that we'd actually taken to council last September regarding elimination of the Shoreline Board duties and transfer of those duties to the Planning Commission, to yourselves. Essentially, the Shoreline's Board only meets when we update the Shoreline Master Program, which is as infrequently as we update the comp plan. So new members can be pointed to the Shoreline Board and literally never sit, never appear at a meeting, if there doesn't happen to be a Shoreline Master Program update during their tenure, which is quite possible. And at present, the Shoreline Board is down to four members. So it made sense to us to transfer the duties of the Shoreline Board to the Planning Commission, and when the next Shoreline Master Program update comes around, we will likely form an ad hoc committee of Shoreline's experts or people interested in updating the Shoreline Master Program to assist you with doing that. They could work on that while you work on other items, and we would likely hold joint meetings. We put this item on the 2014 docket to memorialize council's previous action, which they took last September. And last Tuesday, council confirmed its previous decision to initiate this amendment, and will hear the item directly in 2014. In addition, there was council direction to reinstate the Planning Commission's stipend at $100 a month. So good news for all of you. The next item on the docket was a staff-proposed amendment regarding preschools in single-family zones. Currently, preschools are permitted use in commercial zones, but there are conditional use in residential zones. And as you're aware, conditional uses are uses that can fit into an area but may have impacts that warrant mitigating conditions being imposed, hence the term conditional use. In 2013, at the end of the summer, we received a lot of complaints from a neighborhood just south of Bothell High School about a new preschool that was going in, and most of the concerns centered around the issue of the school's compatibility within the single-family The neighbors at the time of construction of the school were very vocal and very concerned about what was going on. So in responding to those concerns, staff proposed to council bringing this item forward as part of the 2014 docket for council consideration to initiate potential code amendments to address those concerns. However, because of the large scale and scope of work associated with the periodic plan and code update, council supported a staff recommendation to not initiate this item at this time, and to bring it back as part of the 2015 Docket of Plan and Code Amendments for consideration at that time. Since the preschool in question received their certificates of occupancy and have been operating as a preschool, we literally haven't received a single complaint. So I think the concerns were really over construction issues and just the appearance of a new use within the neighborhood that people weren't used to. And I think, hopefully, the fact that we haven't received complaints since, hopefully tells us that the school is operating as it should, and that the conditions that needed to be mitigated are being mitigated. So given that, and given the amount of work we have to do on the plan and code update, we felt it was warranted to hold this one off for a year. We received a couple of docket requests while actually at the council meeting last Tuesday. These didn't come forward on the docket as part of staff, but they were brought up at the meeting. Just before the meeting, council received emails and a petition from a group of citizens asking them to consider initiating code amendments to address what they perceive as a shortfall in the city's adult entertainment regulations, and more specifically, as they relate or may not relate to bikini barista operations. This issue resonated with council, and council initiated proposed code amendments to address the citizens' concerns, and they retained the issue directly. And this item will be scheduled following the Fitzgerald 35th Code Amendments. We think that this issue is most likely, it's more of a legal issue than a land use issue, so I think we'll be involved to some degree, but it'll primarily be the city attorney's office who will be handling this one. And you won't be seeing it, so you don't have to worry about it. And the last item, one of the council members, Councilmember Sandberg, requested that council initiate proposed code amendments regarding the city's leash laws, dangerous dogs, and fines that can be levied for dogs being off-leashes. And after fairly extensive discussion, council sympathized with Councilmember Sandberg, but declined to initiate any proposed code amendments specifically. But they did state that they will explore the creation of an off-leash dog park through other methods. So this one didn't result in any initiated code amendments either. So that's a, hopefully, fairly quick overview of the docket and the periodic plan and code update. And all of us will be very happy to answer any questions you have, or describe any other issues in further detail, or proceed however you'd like to. This is a study session, so.
Thank you very much, Gary. 18 minutes, not too bad. Questions, comments from the commissioners? Commissioner Booth?
Thanks, Gary, for your presentation. A couple of things. First of all, please convey mine, and I think I speak for the commission, our appreciation of the reinstatement of the stipend, particularly with us taking over the Shoreline Board's responsibilities, and then a pretty busy year. And we recognize the budget things that caused this in the first place, but just convey our appreciation.
Certainly.
So having gone through all this, am I correct that really, item one is really our focus?
Item one is really your focus for the next, almost a year. Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
We still have some plan and code amendments, or primarily code amendments, hanging out there that are still waiting to be processed. We will fit those in as we can. One of the items I put in your packet, I think it's the last item in your packet, shows the pending status, the status of pending code and plan amendments. So we'll fit those in as we can. We've tried to clear the decks as much as we can, and most of the pending items have been through you and are yet to go to council. So we'll be taking items to council over the next few months in particular, and getting those squared away, so to speak, so that you can focus on the periodic plan and code update.
So having seen that, that item one, and all that, but item one contains quite a number of issues, and you've laid out our calendar for us, we don't have to determine this today, but let's make sure that we work in a crisp manner, that, because things are going to keep coming.
Yes.
Week by week. And we want to do the job that's necessary, and yet not belabor issues.
Exactly.
If not needed. So we're going to need to kind of gain a rhythm of how to work here, and then also with staff on doing that, so.
Yeah, that's a good comment, Steve. We've tried to, we've tried to build in a rhythm for you, in that we will bring two planned elements that you'll look at, and then a couple weeks later, you'll see them back in follow-up, so that any revisions you want to see made to what we bring to you can be made, and then come back to you. So hopefully, we'll get into that two-week rhythm. You'll see something new, and then you'll see something new the following week, and then the first one will come back to you, and then a week later, the second one will come back to you.
Right.
So if you look through your schedule, hopefully, you'll see a rhythm there, and we'll see how that goes. We anticipate that a lot of the elements will simply require updating. We'll pull out stuff that's no longer applicable, because time has passed, or things have been done, and that policy is no longer needed. We'll simply bring things up-to-date, as I said. Other elements will require more work, specifically for the issues that I covered briefly in the presentation. But we really do think that a lot of the subarea plans and major plan elements, hopefully, will go fairly quickly.
Great. That's all I had.
Other questions for staff?
Gary, a couple of things. Last year, we dealt with a lot of minor housekeeping issues.
Yes.
And I was just wanting to get a sense, does staff see that there's going to be housekeeping issues that will come along during the course of the year that will have to fit in with all else that's going on?
Well, you know, I think this is actually the first docket in a long time we haven't had any real housekeeping issues that we've taken forward. But inevitably, something usually comes up, whether it's bikini baristas, or whatever. I don't think we've had too many years, Bill, have we, where something hasn't come up during the course of the year? If something does come up, we'll just have to do our best to fit it in, and into a very tight schedule.
Yeah, to the maximum extent possible, for those kinds of things that do come up, we'll try to push them off till the 2015 docket, because this really will be all-consuming.
Mm-hmm.
And we want you, we don't want you distracted. I think when Commissioner Booth said you need to establish a rhythm, that is a very apt description, because introducing something else, something qualitatively different from the plan and code update, it can be a little disruptive to the flow, so we're really going to try to avoid that if we can.
And then just one other question. The news is out that, you know, elections last November, moving forward with marijuana laws, and we haven't seen anything coming to us with regard to the marijuana issue and the legalization of, I guess, stores or franchises for it. How is the city dealing with that, and is that something that we would expect to see or comment on during the course of this year?
I'll take that one. The city has not taken any action specifically related to I-502 and marijuana. That's not to say that we don't have any controls in place, because we do. Between the State Liquor Control Board controls and our regular zoning regulations, there are, there are rules and standards in place. For example, under the State Liquor Control Board guidelines, or not guidelines, they're actually, they're regulations, you cannot have a marijuana-related business actually, they're regulations, you cannot have a marijuana-related business within 1,000 feet of a protected use. And there are many kinds of protected uses. They include schools and playgrounds and churches and things like that. We've mapped those out on the city, and literally, there may be 40 acres in the whole city that isn't covered by one of these buffer zones around a protected use. And that 40 acres is in the middle of the Canyon Park Business Park. So that's one thing. And then we also have our regulations that say where you can do retail and where you can't do retail. And so someone who wants to sell marijuana, you can't do it out of their house, you know, still has to comply with our zoning regulations. So there are standards in place. That's not to say that the council may not decide to establish additional regulations that would further define where marijuana businesses can conduct business, but it hasn't happened yet.
Anything else from commissioners?
I had one other question.
Sure.
So one other question I had, and I don't want to, I'm not going to get into the weeds here too much. I know we'll be doing greater work in depth on each one of these issues. But my question is around, I think, a number of the things that are going to be, we're going to be asked to work on, we're going to say are state mandated or driven by the Growth Management Act. And so my question at kind of a high level with regards to that is, just as an example, when we read that the Snohomish County part of our city has a deficit capacity of 3,554 people, around 3,600 people, is that number allocated to us by Snohomish County? That's my first question. And then my other question is, is that negotiable? I mean, is there a way for us to push back on that and say, you know, hey, make it 3,000? Or, I'm just wondering, kind of, how, take us through the process of how that and then any other kind of Growth Management Act kind of mandate actually comes to the city? Can I deal with that?
Yeah, sure. Go ahead.
Those are great questions, and they call for a lengthy answer, so bear with me. Because this answer starts all the way at the Growth Management Act. And the Growth Management Act requires that certain areas in the state have multi-county policies. We're one of those areas. So the area including King County, Snohomish County, Pierce County, and Kitsap County are all under the aegis of the Puget Sound Regional Council. The Puget Sound Regional Council has given the responsibility and authority to come up with those county, multi-county planning policies with which all the other, all the four counties had to be consistent. So those multi-county planning policies appear in a document called Vision 2040. It's a four-county regional growth strategy that we can provide for you electronically. It's kind of interesting to see where all this other stuff emanates from. All right, so you have the multi-county planning policies, and then the GMA says that each county has to have its own countywide planning policies, and those countywide planning policies have to be consistent with the multi-county planning policies. And then each jurisdiction, each city and county within the four-county area, their comprehensive plan has to be consistent with their county's countywide planning policies. All right, so that's the, that's the structure. Vision 2040 identifies a number of urban centers throughout the four-county region. The biggest of those urban centers are called metropolitan centers, and they are the big cities in the region. They are Everett in Snohomish County, they're Seattle and Bellevue in King County, they're Tacoma in Pierce County. I don't think there is one in Kitsap County. The next step below metropolitan centers is core cities. There are, there are two core cities in Snohomish County, and they are Linwood and Bothell. There are a total of 14 core cities in the four-county area. We are a core city because back in the early days of growth management, King County and Snohomish County asked their cities if they wanted to nominate themselves to be urban centers. The inducement to be an urban center was that they would theoretically get priority funding for mainly transportation improvements, but also some other capital facilities. So our council, so I took this to our council, and we're talking about, you know, 1995 now. And I always liken Bothell to kind of like a Rojak print, because if you folded Bothell at the county line, it looks kind of the same on both sides. You have a retail center in King County downtown, you have a retail center in Snohomish County, Canyon Park area, you have a big business park or business parks in the King County part, you have business parks in the Snohomish County part. So our council felt it'd be good to be an urban center. It sounds like, makes a lot of sense. We'd get, we'd get priority funding for infrastructure improvements. So they looked at the King County criteria and they looked at the Snohomish County criteria to be an urban center, because you could really go either way. The King County criteria called for a commitment to much higher densities and intensities of development than our council felt comfortable with at the time. The Snohomish County criteria for being an urban center were much looser. They seemed to be more flexible. So we nominated Bothell to be an urban center in Snohomish County and were awarded that So that, what was an urban center back in the 90s became the core city, a core city in Vision 2040. But being a core city also obligated Bothell to accept more population. Now, back in the beginning, as I said, the Snohomish County criteria were pretty loose, and we could just sort of promise that we would accept more population and employment up there. But Vision 2040 took the step of specifically assigning population and employment numbers beyond just trying to accommodate more population and employment. They said, this is how many people you have to accommodate. So that's how we ended up with specific numbers. Let's just talk about Snohomish County. There was, there's only one metropolitan city, so that was a number. There are two core cities, so the core cities as a category were assigned a specific number. So then the question was, how do you divide that number between Linwood and Bothell, because they're the two core cities in Snohomish County? And that was a negotiation, a targeting process that took up a lot of 2011 and 2012, finally wrapping up in 2013. So there was some negotiation there, Steve, in the amount. But Linwood got a whole lot more than we did because Linwood, all of Linwood was in Snohomish County and only part of Bothell was. So it was, it was assigned proportionally and fairly. But we do end up with a deficit. We don't have enough area designated for residential growth to accommodate the target. Happily, as Gary pointed out earlier, the Canyon Park Business Park has a designation of office professional light industrial. There is not a residential designation at all attached to the Business Park. So by the mere act of adding a residential activity center designation to Canyon Park Business Park, at least on paper, it probably goes most of the way towards overcoming that Moreover, at this point, a paper exercise may be all it takes. And I don't mean to sound cynical, but the Canyon Park Business Park is still pretty new. There may be some old 1980s first-generation tilt-up office warehouse developments in there that are getting to the end of their economic life and that have land values that are close to appreciating to the point where it makes sense to knock those down and put in mid-rise office buildings. But for the most part, the Business Park is probably years and years away from redeveloping. Had the, had the economy kept going at the same pace it was in 2007 before the Great Recession, I would have bet money that we would have seen some of that redevelopment going on at Canyon Park now. But the Great Recession hit, and it literally emptied out buildings in the Canyon Park Business Park. The occupancy rates are slowly climbing back, they're recovering, but land values are still not to the point where knocking down existing buildings and replacing them with taller buildings is justified. So this, this whole process of creating population capacity is not so much about meeting a demand that's there now. It's about positioning Bothell to be ready when the demand, when the market dictates. And I've used Canyon Park as an example, but as Gary said, there are two other areas where we think there are opportunities to add residential capacity. One is Country Village, which has only a community business designation on it and really is appropriate for redevelopment in a mixed-use fashion. And the third opportunity is up at the top of Nike Hill, top of 228th, where the FEMA property is, which we think would make a wonderful neighborhood village. It's, it's big enough that you could ring it with dense vegetation and thereby protect the surrounding single-family, still have enough room for a little neighborhood-scale commercial development and townhomes, maybe something even more dense than that. Obviously, none of that would happen until FEMA, or I think, actually, I think that property is owned by the Corps of Engineers, until they were to surplus the site, which they could do. I mean, we know that FEMA has outgrown that site. They have employees in rented space in Linwood. So it's not a given, even though they have a five-story underground bunker, that they'll be there forever. They could, they could surplus it at some point. So that was a really long answer, but you asked for it.
No, that helped me a lot, and I hope that helped the rest of the commissioners as well to kind of get some framework as to not only the population issue, but just all the issues that are coming at us.
So one, one quick follow-on to that. Is there, are we allowed to use our urban growth area, not city limits, to look at population allocation? Or are we restricted to what's currently within the limits of the city?
Yeah. Another good question. We have to plan for areas outside our city limits, but we can only count the area inside the current city limits towards meeting our targets. But you bring to mind another question. When we went through this targeting exercise before, we ended up with a little bit of a surplus in King County, surplus capacity, and a little bit of deficit in Snohomish County. We argued to Snohomish County at the time, we're all one city. Why can't we combine our targets and satisfy them through land use designation citywide? Which we thought was a really compelling argument. But, but it didn't carry the day up in Snohomish County. It wasn't that much of a deficit, so they kind of let it go, but...
So recognizing that annexation did not pass last year, is annexation a possible solution? And is the city council considering another annexation run as an opportunity to satisfy that need?
Annexation would help, but the council's not actively pursuing any annexations in Snohomish County. However, if neighborhoods band together and decide that they'd like to annex to Bothell, we'll certainly facilitate annexation. We don't foresee anything anywhere close to the scale of the annexation that was attempted there before. We're quite happy, though, that all of our King County annexation areas are coming into the city effective February 28th. And we're having a party because this is on the air. Everyone is welcome to an annexation celebration Thursday night, February 27th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the King County Public Health Center at 10808 Northeast 145th Street. In one of the annexation areas, there will be refreshments and a brief program. And we invite anyone to come, but especially anyone who might be watching and listening who is, who lives in the annexation areas. We're very excited about, about being able to serve those folks.
Thank you, Bill. So any other questions, thoughts? Yes?
If you'll indulge me just a little while longer. Bruce and Gary and I were here at the start of the comp plan. We all helped to write the first comp plan, but you folks probably weren't. So I just, I just wanted to give you a little history because, because one of the themes of this comp plan update will be streamlining. And I wanted to take a moment here at the outset to explain why we're doing that. So taking you back to 1990, the Growth Management Act had just been passed. People statewide were really excited about this, this opportunity. There had been comprehensive plans in the past, but they had no teeth. Jurisdictions would prepare them, they would sit on a shelf, they would, and they'd gather dust. The Growth Management Act changed all that. The Growth Management Act required that comprehensive plans contain certain elements. Moreover, they required that cities and counties adopted regulations to implement the comprehensive plan. So now the people's comprehensive plans meant something, and that really raised the stakes. There was also a lot of money provided from the state to cities and counties to do, to prepare their GMA-compliant plans. We got, we got a bunch of that. Staff was excited, the citizenry was excited, and we went into this thing whole hog. We weren't satisfied with just having the elements required by state law. Our community wanted more elements. So whereas I think back then there were five required elements, we have 13. We also have had 13 sub-area plans, now 17 sub-area plans. And each element and sub-area plan ended up being very detailed because that's what the community wanted, and we're quite happy to oblige. I mean, this was a planner's dream to be able to do something like this. And so while you have plans that are in electronic form, or maybe you look at them online, this is what it looks like when it's, when it's all printed out. It is, it's a massive document. Back then, we were riding this wave of enthusiasm and excitement. And although the plan was big, our, our thought, our dream, our vision was that every year we would, we would update two or three elements and two or three sub-area plans so that, so that the plan would remain fresh and alive and relevant, and it would never go stale. Well, that lasted about six months, and then, and then reality intervened and other things came up, and we lost staff, and we just weren't able to maintain the plan the way we'd want to. So you read some parts of the plan, and they seem, you know, really old. This is old information. And you don't, a plan loses credibility if people read through it and they say, well, that building's been gone for 10 years, you know, something like that. So one of the things that, that we are proposing to do in this update is eliminates some things that aren't state requirements that, over time, have turned out not to really contribute much to the betterment of the community. So we just wanted you to be prepared. So when we come to you with, for example, the community services element, and we say we're going to, we're going to save some policies from this, relocate them elsewhere, but otherwise, we're proposing to eliminate the element. but otherwise, we're proposing to eliminate the element. It's, it's not because we have a cavalier attitude, it's because it's a necessity for our, our reduced staff to be able to maintain this thing. We need to streamline it down to the essential components. Now, it's, it's a hard thing to do because the, we think that a lot of these policies have stood the test of time really well. I mean, it's, it's really good stuff. So it pains us, because we wrote them. It pains us to say, we're going to strike them from the plan because we just, we just can't maintain them. So we apologize beforehand, but...
Well, thank you for that, and personally, I really appreciate the recognition that the need to take a fresh look at what's effective and implementable is going to be really, really important. And appreciate you guys' passion in building Bothell since the early '90s when GMA came in. And you're right, it probably was a planner's dream. I think it's important, looking forward, that we have a different and new community, and we need to make sure it represents their dream. And all we can do to convey public opinion back and work with you guys and partner to ensure that we're reflecting the needs and desires of the community is going to be probably what I see is the most important thing that we can do. And I will be right there behind you, Bill, holding you and your staff accountable for taking things out of that document. My personal experience has been very similar over the years, and opportunities to create something that's much more functional, usable, and easier for the community to understand, not just planners or engineers or planning staff or elected officials. So that will be an extremely important part, and I'm really glad to hear that, that we're moving in that direction. So with that, anything else with regard to study session?
I don't believe so.
Yeah, I can, very briefly. We've been talking about bringing the plan up to date and making it more current, and Bill has already alluded to one of those issues, is transitioning from a huge doorstop of a hunk of paper to an electronic format. And we want to continue that, and we want to create a true online-friendly document with hyperlinks, and so if something in the natural environment element references the critical areas ordinance, you can click on a hyperlink and go straight to the critical areas ordinance. That's probably not all going to happen in this next 15 months or so effort, because we simply don't have the staff, time, resources, or money to do that. But our intention is, once we have updated the plan and the plan has been adopted, that effort will begin immediately. So we want you to know that we, I know some of you are software folks and tech folks, and probably looking forward to something like that, and we are too. It's just that we have to do it one bite at a time. So we need to focus on updating the plan itself right now, and then we will make it look and function online as well as we can immediately following.
Thank you.
And the primary reason for that is simply that June 30th, 2015, adoption date. That's not flexible, that's not movable, we can't, we can't ask for it to be extended or waived. We have to have a plan adopted by that date. So the plan update really was, was originally scheduled to happen in, was it 2012, Bill? But because of the economy, the state legislature extended that out to 2015. So we really should have already been through this process, hence that, that hard date now of June 30th.
Well, thank you. Appreciate the presentations and the discussion, it's been very informative. Moving on down the agenda, no old business. Looks like we have a couple of reports from staff?
Yes. I've included in your packet the fourth quarter 2013 report from the Hearing Examiner. The Hearing Examiner gives you a quarterly report, just to let you know what cases he has heard in the last quarter. I'm not going to cover anything in there, but if you, if you have questions, we'll try to answer them. And then I've included a flyer for the Arch Housing Workshop, which has now been scheduled for Thursday, March 6th. Previously, two members had indicated interest in attending that. Hopefully, you still have interest in attending that, as well as any other members who might, might be able to. It's now at St. Luke's Lutheran Church in Bellevue. The flyer does have directions and address. Arch does request that you RSVP if you're planning on attending, just so they can have a number, an idea of the numbers who are going to be there, because they will provide refreshments. I've been to the workshop a couple times in the past, it's, it's very, very informative. You will receive a lot of information about housing and affordable housing in particular in just a couple of hours, probably more than you ever knew. So I would certainly encourage any commissioner who can attend that night to do so. I'll try to be there and hopefully see some of you there as well. And that's it for staff reports.
Thank you. Any reports from members of the Planning Commission? I'd just like to say all welcome back. Look forward to spending more time with you over the next several months, and at this time, take a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
See everybody next week.